Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Higher Education. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 3:16 PM. We're in Conference Room 229. We have the 3:15 agenda, but also on this agenda is four deferred items from our last hearing, and we will take that up for decision-making at the end of this agenda. So with that, our first item on, well, we just say this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, and that is February 6th, in this room, 229. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. I want to remind everyone, you have a two-minute time limit, and we're a little bit more generous. The other committees have only been given one minute. But if we get to a point where we have a lot of testimonies, we might have to go to one minute. But for now, we have two minutes. So first item on the agenda, Senate Bill 101 relating to medical school tuition requires the graduates of the University of Hawaii Johnny Byrne School of Medicine who have paid in-state tuition to serve as a physician in the state of Hawaii for at least two years following their medical residency or fellowship. And it begins with class of 2029. Hello, am I going to be around? Being that the author of this bill will certainly be around. Our first testifier on this measure. Let's see, Desiree? No, this is, sorry. Did I not pull out all the suppliers? Okay, Candice Park, Deputy Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair member. We recommend indicating that the law is of matter of statewide concern.
Thank you. The AG. Okay, Mr. Shoemaker, Dr. Shoemaker?
Good afternoon, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kadani, and Senators Sam Shoemaker. I'm the Dean of the Johnny Byrne School of Medicine. We would like to stand on a written testimony which we submitted earlier, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
Is this in support or in opposition?
It's in opposition.
Thank you. We may have comments for you, I mean, questions. Also Eric Abbe, testifying for Hawaii Primary Care Association, in support. Carolyn Lind, in support. Johnny Mae Perry, in support. Natalie Wassa, opposed. Stephen Hazam, also opposed. Anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure or on Zoom? Hearing none, questions? Senator Hashimori.
Thanks, Dean, for being here. And, you know, I think we've had many discussions about this issue. I was reading your testimony, and so good comments. So I guess I wanted to ask the first question of what do you think the role of JABSUM is for our community?
The role of JABSUM is to produce the physician workforce for the state of Hawaii.
For the state of Hawaii?
Correct.
All right, so maybe take us through your enrollment numbers, right? So you have, how many, how many people do you enroll in JABSUM every single year?
Seventy-seven.
Okay, so out of the seventy-seven, how many then do you graduate? And how many stay in Hawaii to do their residency?
We grad, we have about fifty percent of our graduates doing their residency training in Hawaii, and the remainder doing their residency training on the mainland.
Fifty percent? Because I think we, according to an article we saw, it was, it says thirty-one percent of the class of 2023 will stay in Hawaii for their residency.
How many graduates, though?
Seventy-seven per year.
Seventy-seven graduate?
Yes.
Then that's how many students enrolled, they all graduated?
They all graduated, right.
By and large, they all graduated.
Okay, so is it fifty percent, or is it thirty-one that stay in Hawaii to do their residency?
It varies from year to year, but it's somewhere.
Is the variation twenty percent in a given year, though?
It could be. The more important statistic, I think, if I might suggest, is the number of our graduates who do their residency in Hawaii, who then wind up practicing in the state of Hawaii, which is over eighty percent. In a questionnaire we administered to this year's entering class, eighty-one percent of the accepted applicants indicated that they intended to practice in the state of Hawaii, which is the highest retention rate of any medical school in the country.
So, but you, this is a survey, though.
It's a survey, so they.
But this is not actually what will happen?
Well, except that if they go to JABSUM and they do their residency here, we retain at least eighty percent of them. Some student.
Well, okay, so let's, let's hold it there. So if you, if you do your residency here in Hawaii, right, you, so, so, let's just say fifty, but I think we were saying thirty-one, so maybe between twenty to thirty students will go and do their residence here in Hawaii.
Correct.
All right, and then the funnel, then you say of that, maybe eighty percent will actually stay in Hawaii to practice.
Correct.
So then that brings us down to, I don't know, twenty-ish students, twenty-two, twenty to twenty-two students. So that's just of the students that you're putting into residency from your graduation from JABSUM of the seventy-seven. So your funnel is kind of getting small. But I guess we'll, we'll take a look at the larger number, because I think the statistic that you've been giving to us is that fifty percent of your graduates of JABSUM in totality will return back to Hawaii.
Correct.
So what is the fifty percent, which is what, thirty-nine, forty?
Somewhere around there.
Per class?
Yeah.
But what is our shortage in Hawaii of the amount of people, of physicians that we need on a per-year basis?
Well, we, we calculate that the shortage is around seven hundred and fifty physicians in total.
In total? Per year?
No, across the state.
Right now that we need?
Right.
Okay, so then that's, that's, that's the whole genesis of this bill, right? It's, we need seven hundred-plus doctors in our state, and yet we are only getting forty students per year out of JABSUM. So I think our challenge is to you is trying to push that number up, right? Because, because in your testimony, you say that applicants may not choose to go to JABSUM because of this requirement that we're putting in to require them to work in the state at least two years at some point. We're not saying immediately, at some point. Right, but, but how many, how many people apply to JABSUM?
Two thousand three hundred.
And so what is your acceptance rate?
Well, we accepted seventy-seven, can't do.
Right, so three percent, a little over three and a half percent. So your acceptance rate is three and a half percent, and yet you're worried that we're not going to have enough students to populate JABSUM. And this, this bill is only for in-state tuition, right? So you, if you, if the in-state population didn't necessarily want to go to JABSUM because of the difference, you could recruit out-of-state residents who potentially you could say, are you going to actually stay in Hawaii? And you could, you could go and find and interview two thousand one hundred and thirty-two people in 2023 to see, will you actually stay in Hawaii and practice? And then accept them at a higher rate, because what is the subsidy at JABSUM right now for in-state versus out-of-state?
The out-of-state tuition is roughly double the in-state.
Right, so the current resident tuition is thirty-six thousand, right? And the out-of-state tuition is seventy-one thousand. So we're giving every single student in-state, which is fine, a thirty-four thousand dollar subsidy. But we expect nothing from them to help, to help figure out what to do with this seven hundred-plus shortage that we have in the state of Hawaii.
Well, what I'm suggesting, Senator, is that there are other ways to address the physician shortage.
I, I get it, but, but, so you, you claim in, in your testimony that you want to go out and get more scholarships to accomplish what we want to do.
If we, many of the scholarships that we provide to our students do have service requirements. So students get, about twenty percent of our students get full tuition scholarships, and those are conditioned upon students coming back and practicing for four years in the state.
Okay, so why aren't we increasing that number to something that's larger? Because if you're accepting sixty-seven students from in-state, why can't we find sixty-seven scholarships per year to help them to achieve some type of better retention policy?
Well, our scholarships largely come from private donors and the health systems. So we do work with the health systems.
Yeah, but you're only at twenty percent, though.
That's correct.
How many, how many take advantage of the tuition? What do we give them? We pay, we pay a percent, we pay their tuition if they stay, if they work for so many years?
Yeah.
What does that cost? Loan repayment?
Yeah, so we do that also, so.
How many, how many of the students that stay here in Hawaii take advantage of that?
I don't have those numbers with me today, but I can, I can supply those after the hearing.
So I guess the whole point, what I'm trying to paint here is that we should not be satisfied with our fifty percent retention rate that you are talking about to satisfy the doctors. And the fifty percent, I'm being generous, because this is all graduates. At some point, we'll return, right? This is not immediately. I think that's, that's great, we need to track that. But I think we've been inquiring about this since 2019, and we haven't seen any increase in the amount of people that, of that fifty percent rate. So, so I think there's something at the medical school that we have to be doing, and that's the whole point of this bill. It's not the bill itself. It is the momentum that we have to have to figure out what is going on with us trying to figure out how to bring, keep our docs in Hawaii or bring them back and increase that number. Because potentially, you have, you have a golden opportunity at the point of admission to screen at least the people that you're accepting to make sure that they're going to stay. And I understand that lives change, and you can't make a financial commitment. But if you're not increasing that fifty percent, I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here if, if your goal is to fill the severe physician shortage that we have in the state of Hawaii.
It is my goal, and we are working diligently.
So what, so what is the goal to make sure that, what, in percentage-wise, are we looking at to increase that fifty percent to?
Well, again, it's a multi-pronged strategy. The Health Education Loan Repayment Program is one aspect of it. The scholarships that we mentioned.
I understand, but what is it, when numbers, what are you looking at? Because at the end of the day, you can say all these programs, right? And, but at the end of the day, the data is what will speak for itself.
Well, what I would suggest, Senator, is the most, the closest association between where a physician decides to practice is where they do their residency training. So one of the solutions to our physician shortage is to have more residency training slots here in Hawaii. And we're working with the health systems to make that happen. But that requires a fairly significant financial commitment from the health systems. And so we have to scale this such that they can afford to create these positions. And then if we are successful, many of our graduates who now have to go to the continent to do their residency training would have the option of staying here. And if they stay here, as we have mentioned, we have a much higher likelihood of retaining them in the healthcare workforce here in the state.
Okay, but I think we need to pick a number to say what is our goal, because I think we've been saying that since 2019.
Would be a hundred percent of the physician graduates containing.
And I think that, politically, that's the right answer, but I think we need to get realistic at some point. Is it increasing it by five percent over the next five years?
Well, I think we can increase it by, by at least ten percent over the next five years.
Okay.
And remember, I just got here, so I'm, you know, I'm.
I, I understand, but there's no training wheels when you have a, we have a shortage of seven hundred and fifty doctors a year.
And one, you know, one of our strategies is to develop rotations on the neighbor islands, Maui, and in the hopes that students who are exposed to those kind of practice environments will then want to practice in those, in those locations. So we're working very hard to develop neighbor island training opportunities for our medical, medical students. The other thing we can consider is increasing the medical school class size, again, with the idea that we're trying to address this physician shortage. But in order to do that, we have to have adequate placement size for these students to train. And that's another fairly involved process that we're working, working on diligently every single day.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Senator Kadani?
Yes, Doctor, I like what you're saying, but I think the retention rate after four years, do you know what the percentage is? After the requirement of four years that they stay, what's the percentage if they stay?
You mean if they get a scholarship and have a payback commitment?
Yes.
I don't have that data, but I would imagine it's quite high.
Of those seventy-seven students that enroll each year, how many of them are residents?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven of the seventy-seven. I have a story, a personal story. I have a good friend whose son went to school here in Waikiki. Went away to school, came back, and applied at the medical school, got rejected. Got accepted to Northwestern, he had excellent grades, and I could not understand how he was rejected. He went through his whole thing, did residency, ended up coming back here, and now he's working in Kaiser. But here you have a resident who wanted to come here, had good grades, and was denied. Got accepted at Northwestern, it's supposed to be a really good school, right? How, how does that work? I mean, it's like, why are we turning away our, our local residents who want to stay here and practice?
Well, we, we have a very involved admissions process. Candidates submit written materials.
Understand, but I mean, he obviously was competing, competitive, and got, got selected with those requirements at Northwestern. And being somebody from Hawaii, and he's going to practice in Hawaii, and then gets rejected, that's troubling to hear, you know?
I understand, but there, there are a limited number of slots here, here at the medical school, and we can't accommodate every single resident who wants to.
Yeah, but if you've got fifty percent of the seventy-seven not staying in Hawaii, wouldn't you want to fill those positions with those that are Hawaii and are committed to practice in Hawaii to raise our, our level of doctors here?
Well, we, we are committed to training the majority of the graduates, or the majority of the applicants to our medical school come from Hawaii, and we believe that those people have a higher likelihood of wanting to stay and practice in Hawaii.
Right, that's why, why are we turning down our, our residents who, who qualify and actually is up there, and we reject them, and we accept additional out-of-state students?
Well, many of the out-of-state students that we accept wind up staying in Hawaii. And given that we have this physician shortage, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing.
No, but again, only fifty percent, you said, stay, and that's being generous, right? Only fifty percent stay and stay in Hawaii on the onset anyway, right?
Well, we are committed to increasing the percentage of our graduates, primarily those from Hawaii. We're committed to trying to give them incentives to stay in the state of Hawaii to practice.
Yes, and we are obliged by providing loan repayments and other programs.
Yes, you have, you've been very generous.
Increased neighbor island, but I'm just saying that overall, shouldn't we be looking at, again, raising that rate? And part of it is accepting local students who obviously meet all the requirements and then some, and that they're committed to stay in Hawaii?
If we want to increase the medical school class size, which I think is one strategy we could employ to address the physician shortage, we have to demonstrate to our accrediting agency that we have the capacity to train those students effectively, so.
What's the priority of the university when it comes to, do we increase our class size for physicians? Do we add on new programs in, in other areas? Do we add on more for a new program at the cancer center? Do we add on more for athletic, I mean, what, what, again, and I've asked this question of the university as to what's the pecking order, and what's, what's important? And I think healthcare is up there, and healthcare should be one of the top considerations. And if you don't have doctors to see your patients, then, you know, to me, that seems to be a priority over some of the other kinds of things that are in the budget. Yet I don't see any, did you guys go to, go to the border regions and go to the administration as far as how can we help with the, with the shortage besides coming in and asking for loan, loan repayments and scholarships?
Well, we need, we need more of any number of different health professions in the state of Hawaii. Huge nursing shortage, shortage of social workers, shortage of physical therapists. So I don't think it's.
Psychologists?
Yeah, psychologists. I don't think it's singling out one particular health profession as the locus of all of our efforts. It has to be abroad.
No, but we have a, we have a medical school that we only train seventy-seven students, right? And we have a seven hundred and fifty doctor shortage. And yes, we have nursing, we're trying to expand nursing, we're trying to have West Oahu do nursing, Big Island and Maui. So we are looking at those efforts as well, but again, it's like, what are we doing?
Well, I mean, I can't, I can't speak for President Hensel or Provos Bruno, but I do believe that they're acutely aware of the need to expand our healthcare training programs at the university.
Can we ask you to provide to this committee, what is the plan? What is your plan going forward as to how do we increase the number of physicians?
Sure, be happy to.
Definitely have a plan.
Share my thoughts.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on Senate Bill 19 relating to nursing. Appropriate funds to establish the Bachelor of Science first degree program. Members of Maui, I just said that, right? And appropriate funds, so we have Matana Woodward, Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Della Terraoka?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. I'm Della Terraoka, interim Vice President for the Community Colleges. I also have some people from Maui on Zoom. Laura Nagel, interim Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, and I believe she was going to have her nursing director also. So we're available for questions. We did, we're standing on her testimony, and we're in support.
Okay. Let's see, Holly Kessler in support, Eric Abbe in support, Laura Reinhardt. First of all, Laura?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you so much for hearing this measure. My name is Laura Reinhart. I'm the Director of the Hawaii State Center for Nursing. We are an organization established in law in part to study the nursing workforce and educational capacity. And so we have some information that we have from two of our main research studies. One is the nursing, we study the nurses when they re-license, and then also the schools of nursing. And we did find, which is included in the testimony, we did find that there is ample capacity in Maui for this type of program. There's a high interest, there's nurses who do go seek higher education, and then, and there is, so that capacity really does, it will be supported on Maui.
Thank you. Hey, I'm sorry, Marian Orikawa Barne on support, I remember in support. Anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody from Maui on Zoom? Okay, members, questions? Hearing no questions, we are going to move on to the next item. Senate Bill 637 relating to the University of Hawaii appropriate funds for the various nursing programs. Okay, so again, we have Carlota, Carlotta Amorino, comments from the Office of Information Practices, Ben Krebs in opposition, Gabe Lee with comments. Am I reading the wrong one? No, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. This is Clementina. Okay, come on, I have my hand on myself. Been a long day. Still, it's the end of the day.
So Chair Merkado Kim, Vice Chair Kadani, and members of the Senate Committee on Higher Education. My name is Clementina Seriulab. I'm the UH Manoa School of Nursing and Dental Hygiene Dean. And this testimony is presented on behalf of the University of Hawaii system, including the UH Manoa School of Nursing and Dental Hygiene, UH Wasahu and UH Hilo School of Nursing, in strong support of Senate Bill 637 relating to the UH. And as far as UH Wasahu, we have Rebecca Romine, who can provide additional comments and testimony as well. And we have, I believe, on Zoom, Jeanette Ayers Kawakami for UH Wasihilo. With regards to UH Manoa School of Nursing, we're asking funding for the final phase of the UH Wasahu, UH Manoa collaboration for four positions and one position to staff our online RN2BS program that supports statewide, it's a statewide program. So we're here to answer questions that you may have.
Rebecca, would you like to speak on UH Wasahu? Okay, Rebecca?
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. My name is Dr. Rebecca Romine, and I am the current Faculty Director of our pre-nursing pathway program at UH Wasahu. And like Clem, we're in full support of this testimony or Senate bill, and we'd just like to make sure that as a whole system, we're here to support all the nursing and pre-nursing programs. Available for comments.
Thank you very much. Laura Reinhardt?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you again. Similar to the previous measure, the Center for Nursing did look at our research related to the geographies that these programs would be most impacting. And we also, and again, found that there would be capacity both on the nursing side, that there would be that appetite for these programs, as well as the education side for the capacity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Several others in support. Anyone here wishing to testify? Anyone on Zoom wishing to testify? Okay, members, questions?
I have a question, I don't know who it's for. So is it only the university that offers the nursing program, or do the community colleges also offer?
Community colleges, yes. So UH Maui College, as you know, offers an associate degree in nursing. Kawai Community College offers an associate degree in nursing. And Kapu Kalani Community College offers an associate degree. UH Hilo, however, offers a BS in nursing. So those are the various nursing programs. And Kawai Community College, associate degree as well, yeah.
And I mean, in talks with Mike Munibasami, we talked about Kapi'olani being like the hub and spokes out to HCC with the nursing program, because there are so many of the people that come from Kalihi all the way to Waipahu that, you know, could take advantage of some of those programs. So I'm not sure where that is in the pipeline. Any idea where that is on the pipeline? So I have it on my list.
I'm Della Terraoka, University Community College, University of Hawaii Community Colleges. So I actually did not find out that that was still on the list until recently, because I was not in this position last year. But it is on my list to follow up. I'm trying to figure out what's possible, starting a, a program, even if it's a spoke, it requires program accreditation, there's a lot of costs. But I actually had some other ideas, so I'm putting together a proposal. I was hoping maybe I could meet with you in a few weeks to let you know what, what might be possible.
Because this came from the community, it didn't come from me. And they're saying that, you know, the care homes and caregivers and so forth are, are within that corridor, huge amount.
Yep, I agree.
And so, you know, it's a shame they got to go all the way to KCC. And then hopefully with West Oahu getting online. hopefully with West Oahu getting online, but then you're talking about four-year degree versus an associate's degree, so...
Right.
Yeah, I think that we really need to address that. Okay, so I'm going to follow up with you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, members? Okay, and now we go to Senate Bill seven-one-four, which is Carlotta...
Seven-four-one.
Seven-four-one. Talk about being a little sick at this moment. Uh, Carlotta Almarino, Ben Krebs, Gabe Lee. So none here in person or on Zoom to testify, so members, I don't know that there is anyone to ask questions of it. Uh, let me just say that Carlotta and Gabe Lee gave comments, and Ben Krebs was in opposition to this measure. So, um, if there are no questions on that item, I will go right into decision-making. Okay, so, starting with this three-fifteen agenda item, Senate Bill one-on-one, this is to the medical school tuition, uh, requires the graduates of the medical, John A. Burns School of Medicine to have in-state tuition to serve as physician in the state for at least two years following the medical residency fellowship. This item goes, that goes to WAM, so I think it deserves a little bit more discussion. So I am going to recommend that we do an SD one, uh, that we put in a statement of statewide concern as needed, and we defect the date to July thirty-one, twenty-fifth. Any discussion, members? Hearing none? Um, Senator, actually, no, no, oh, no, sorry, Senator Kidani, you have the votes. Take the vote, please.
Thank you for Senate Bill one-on-one, recommendation of the chair to pass with amendments.
Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Favella, thank you. Issues adopted.
Senate Bill S, Senate Bill one-one-nine, the recommendation is to do an SD one, blank out the appropriate amounts, and, but we're going to note those amounts in the committee report, and we're going to defect, defect the date to July thirty-one, twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Hearing none? Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill one-one-nine, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senate Bill excused, issues adopted, members.
Thank you. Senate Bill six-three-seven, appropriate funds to the university system for various nursing programs. Uh, recommendation is to do amendments to blank out the appropriation, put the amounts in the committee report, and defect the date to July one-twenty, July thirty-first, twenty-fifth. Discussion? Hearing none? Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Favella, excuse, measures adopted, members.
Okay, and for Senate Bill seven-four-one, uh, this establishes an external audit committee within the University of Hawaii Board of Regents. Recommendation is to pass as is. Discussion, members? Hearing none? Chair votes aye.
Recommendation of the chair for Senate Bill seven-four-one is to pass as is. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Issues adopted.
Okay, we have decision-making on the, uh, last week's agenda item. Senate Bill one-two-three-two, this is relating to the wastewater system. It establishes a three-year new wastewater technology testing pilot program in the University of Hawaii Water Resource Center to test evaluate new wastewater technology systems in coordination with the University of Hawaii Seagrass College Program. Recommendation is to pass with amendments and defect the date to July thirty-one, twenty-fifth.
This is Senate Bill twelve-thirty-two.
It's a twelve-thirty-two. This was a joint, uh, hearing with AG, and they have the same recommendations.
Recommendations to pass with amendments. Senate Bill twelve-thirty-two to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Issues adopted, members.
Okay, and Senate, thank you. Senate Bill six-eight-six, this is relating to the coconut rhinoceros veto program, establish short-term management initiatives for the coconut rhinobito response program. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, include the AG's recommendation to insert appropriate standards and language about the statewide concern, defect the date to July thirty-one, twenty-fifty, blank the amount appropriation, and insert it into the committee report. Any discussion? Hearing none? Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill six-eight-six, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Issues adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill six-five-seven, relating to the Center for Climate Resilient Development, appropriate funds to the School of Ocean and Earth Science Technology within the University of Hawaii. Recommendation, we pass with amendments, blank out the appropriate amounts, noting the defective, uh, knowing the deleted amounts in the committee report affect the date to July thirty-one, twenty-fifty. Discussion? Hearing none? Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill six-five-seven, pass with amendments, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Issues adopted, members.
And finally, for SB eleven-fifty relating to health, this is, uh, requiring the John Burns School of Medicine construct and establish an operative disease and environmental boxing center laboratory. Uh, the recommendation, members, is to defer indefinitely. Uh, we heard from the, um, School of Medicine that they don't do this and that it would be more likely in another department, um, possibly DGA or, not, or not health. So, uh, in that case, we, um, recommending defer. Any discussion? Hearing none? That's it? We are done with our agenda. That's what we defer.
You first, okay.
Okay, we are adjourned.